Fran Rex, counselor.
Debbie Hoaden, counselor.
Joe Cannon, counselor.
Autumn Watson, counselor.
Brady, want to say hi?
Oh, hi, I'm Brady Weidner, Public Works Director.
And they know me, Tim. Already had a long talk with them. So we just were handed out the Financial Systems Options Menu Memo that you put together. That was just distributed, so we don't have that information. But we've also seen the information. Was it you that distributed it, Keith, or was it Axiom?
It was some of the information that R3 and Axiom submitted.
Okay. And maybe you should know how you two work together.
I can, let me do a brief introduction and then sort of explain how we got here. And how the state got here as well, and all that. Nate and Cooper presented the information they had, and then I have one thing to come back to as well. So, as you know, the State of Oregon has determined that it is way short of housing starts in this state. Some 300,000 over 10 years, 500,000 over 20 years. And if you live on the coast, of course, you know that that's the case up and down the coast. And I travel up and down the coast, I hear two things. Housing problems and workforce housing type problems, not McMansions and childcare. So those are reoccurring themes on the entire range of the coast. To help address the housing issue, the State of Oregon funded R3, which is Rural Vitalization and Recovery, which is a group that was established in eastern Oregon to help focus attention on eastern Oregon communities. And because it was already founded, already in existence then, and already doing good work in communities over there, the state funded R3 then to help provide technical assistance to communities throughout the state in terms of middle income housing. R3 then funds the group I worked for to actually do a reach out to go into the communities, and that's called ISECTOR. We have liaisons in the valley, on coastal area, in eastern Oregon, trying to reach out to rural communities. And then ISECTOR is also, excuse me, R3 is also contracted with Axiom, who are engineers, and I'll let Nate and Cooper talk about themselves and explain who they are, what they've done, and how they're working with R3 and the State of Oregon right now, and then I'll get out of the way.
Hi, nice to meet you all. My name is Nate, and this is Cooper. As he said, thank you, Keith, for that. We're with Axiom Project Development Services, and we're a part of the R3 team. Just to maybe reiterate, the R3 focus is to put people in homes. And the real focus is on development in communities that are, have a smaller population and struggle with, one, attraction for developers, two, maybe don't have skill set in-house to move some development opportunities forward, and three, in areas where it may be a little bit challenging to bring teams in order to move some projects forward. And so, as Keith mentioned earlier, they are able to bring the support of some public funding in order to provide some skill set to, for example, Depot Bay in this particular case, bring some skill set which can financially, the expense will be covered by the public funding to help put this development planning forward. And we're working with the R3 team, which we're on the team, as Keith said, also ISECTOR and others, with more than one city, and wanted, we put this proposal forward with a scope to Depot Bay so that we could help them capture the opportunity related to this two acre site and see what the planning, and do the planning in order to determine the opportunity on that site for homes.
ISECTOR, if I can jump in, the ISECTOR was asked to submit to R3, who funds us, communities or particular projects, and I had spoken with the mayor and Kimberly about the Kent Street project a couple of times, particular projects that were, could potentially be developed with technical assistance and funding help. So I submitted a list of 10 priority projects, and of those 10, four were selected by R3 to provide, for them to provide the technical assistance along ISECTOR and the folks at Axiom. So your project, the Kent Street project, is one of four that they identified as ones that could benefit well and potentially to completion from participation and the involvement of R3 and Axiom. So that's how, it wasn't that we were just lining up communities up and down the coast. These were, the review process was one that looked at whether these projects were feasible. Could they be done, and could we provide the technical assistance in the area?
So can we ask questions as we go?
Well, you can ask.
Okay, so one of my first questions, and then we can go on the presentation, is, does the relationship that's spelled out in the documents only relate to the planning phase? Or is, and there's another phase that deals with the actual build out? Is that, or is it all part and parcel of what's in front of us?
Can you guys show up the chart you showed us? Remember that one about your phases?
Yeah, we'll, Cooper will pull that up. Yes, the initial, the document you have in front of you, the intention is to do only the planning stage. Part of the, we have, which Cooper's going to pull up, we have a development and planning process, development management process, which we bring to our clients. And the intention is to efficiently go through a development. Can you guys see that on your screen now?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can't read it, of course.
Right, and actually, I will share with you, you don't necessarily need to. There's a lot in this document, as you can imagine, the development from inception through completion. There's a lot involved with that. And so, this process helps kind of organize it. But really, the key is that we organize it in stages. And you're in stage one, which is you have land, you'd like to do some residences with it, and we need to get started the first step. The intention is to put some information together to provide the stakeholders backup in order to make an informed decision to move to the next step. And that decision can be, things are in line, let's move forward. The decision can be, no, this isn't the direction we want to head. We need you to go back and revisit some things. Because in stage two is where we develop it a little bit further, and we start looking at funding strategies, business plans, legal structure, marketing, those types of things. It may be that the city, after stage one, creates a development agreement with the developer to take it forward from there. That may be an outcome that comes out of stage one. Stage three, in the document that you're looking at on the screen, that is when design begins. And stage four is construction and then operations. So you can see, we really want to make sure we spend some time in the planning upfront in order to give the designers and contractors the right direction going forward. But most importantly, we need to capture the right vision for this property and for Depot Bay. And so, the scope document, can you minimize this for a minute? And sorry, I'm going to go a little bit past your question, but you can stop me if you need to. So the intention with this scope document is to share with the city the team, the resources, can you go to the next page? And the deliverables that we want to provide the city in order to fulfill that stage one planning, which would prepare the city to be able to make an informed decision moving forward with the development. Whether you bring on a partner, whether you put it out for RFP to developers, whether we with R3 help move this forward, we don't know the answer to that yet. That's some of what we want to do in the planning. And R3 brings this at no cost to Depot Bay through the public funding that they have for this type of service.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. And just one other quick question, just, is the memo we got about, it doesn't trigger our charter prohibition, would that also apply to stage two and beyond? Or is it just related to stage one?
That would be stage two and beyond. So in stage one, part of what we're going to do is determine, and there were some great questions that came through with workforce housing and some other aspects of the development. That's what we need to figure out, is we need to learn, what is the target market for Depot Bay? Are they families? Are they, are they working professionals? Is it single? Is it, you know, who's, who's the real need? And then we want to learn, okay, so what is the affordability related to the AMI, et cetera? And so then we need to right-size the development and the unit size for that target market. We don't want to, we don't want to build, let's say, a rental unit, and the size of the rental unit and the rental rate is outpriced the market. We want to make sure it fits to the target market. So we'll go through that exercise in planning and in calculation related to the PERFORMA. That will then allow us to determine what is the construction costs and design costs and development costs for this project? And does that make it pencil so that it will be attractive for the project to be able to go, move forward and be successful? Right now, it's a challenge. The cost of land has gone up, the cost of labor has gone up, the cost of construction has gone up, the cost to borrow money has gone up. And so the intention through that other memo that you have is to use one of those funding options as a lever to help reduce some of those upfront costs that makes the development more viable and thus more affordable to the renter or the buyer. So at the end of stage one is when we'd have a recommendation of how much funds should we bring in from that funding list? And where should we explore trying to bring those funds from? It could be from grants, it could be from the Murrell, it could be from some other area or partnership. It could be a combination. But we don't know that yet. The first focus in this stage one is, what is the need and what would be the right development concept to meet that need?
Thank you very much. Before we move on, does anybody else have any other clarifying questions?
So, I do.
Good.
The, what I just thought I heard you say was that funding sources are not necessarily going to be 100% Murrell. And therefore, the determination that our charter may get in the way is not necessarily a known element at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and let me, let me, sorry, Keith, just one thing, then I would please contribute. Our goal in creating the development plan is knowing the restrictions of you as a city or the charter to make sure we're putting a plan together that can work with that. Not, your charter doesn't end up becoming a showstopper. Please, Keith, can you please add to that?
Yeah, I think the Murrell is, is one element that is very valuable. It doesn't, likely doesn't fund your whole project. That, that's, so there will be other funding sources that you'd be likely pursuing, which might be grants, which might be through your URA and et cetera. And I want to add a, and this is a question I know that Counselor Musella, you brought up in your excellent notes, and you kind of reviewed a lot here. Our original, our original read and opinion was that the Murrell does not, the city does not incur debt with the Murrell. Yesterday, we received a second opinion and it said that is in conflict with that. And so, we had a meeting scheduled today to get clarification on that with OACS. That meeting was canceled sort of at the last moment, about a couple hours before. We were supposed to meet at 1:30, so I apologize for that. I don't have that information. But I want to make sure, I know that's important. I know how that is important because of.
Oh, I've been there, you know, how many times have I asked you about that? But you know.
And so, we did, we did hear.
From who?
OACS. And.
So what people want to say, said it was okay, or was that happened? What was OACS?
So OACS is the program manager. And I'm reading from theirs, and Nate and Cooper, you may not even have seen this one. They said in a note to us, sponsor jurisdiction is the recipient of the loan from OACS. And although they are not the fee payer supplying the funds to repay that loan, they would be liable for ensuring payment. So our original, on a question, because a question that I received from the city, I put that out for a clarification. We received an opinion that the city was not because there's a lien placed on the property that's owned by the developer. And, but now we've got a second opinion, and I.
But you know that lien and that stuff is supported by AI, essentially ChatGPT agrees with the fact that it shouldn't be a back in the charter because the city hasn't taken out of debt. But if he's saying that's what we're doing, then yeah, then there's no way.
So I, we had a meeting to clarify this today. It was canceled at the last moment because someone from OACS, OACS could not be there. So we've rescheduled that.
So one of the, just one second. One of the things we might not be aware, maybe you are, is that the city has plans to, or had plans, I don't know how it's been affected yet, to go out for a vote of the people about whether we can incur debt or not.
I think that's.
In May, but we might have to put it off, but whoop, because other things going on. But we should, but that's a possibility, so that might not be a showstopper.
Okay, so that was why I asked the question specifically about the URA, and whether the URA charter allows for the URA to actually incur debt. Because if the URA can incur debt, then the URA could do this particular project outside of the city, and so we would just need to check to see if that's the case.
I'm not sure that charter or the URA overrules the city charter. I will find out, but I.
Yeah, and I mean, the other thing about the specifically related to the URA is, and there are some very specific things about it not paying for fees. So for example, it would never be able to pay for an SDC fee or anything like that, the way that the, the way that it's currently structured.
That's within the.
Within the URA charter, it is, that we don't, that it will pay for fees.
Huh, I wonder if it needs the SDC.
Those are fees. I think it specifically calls out fees and licensing. We won't cover any of that kind of stuff. But again, it's been a while since I read the URA charter, so it very well could be in there, but and maybe I just misread it.
So how, does, does anybody else have questions? Does anybody else have questions, or should we?
I think we should proceed.
You can proceed. So what's, what do you think?
Well, I think, I think I was going to refer to Nate and Cooper. Have you seen that, that note come across from OACS?
No, we haven't seen that yet, but maybe something I'd like to provide clarity on is the intention with this R3 scope and this first stage, it doesn't obligate Depot Bay or this group or anyone to any funding approach. All it is, is a planning step to understand what's possible on that site and what would be the options. I think you mentioned that you have that memo there that lists a number of different financial support options that R3 can help bring to the city in the next stage. We had a meeting this morning with Scapoose, the city of Scapoose. Habitat for Humanity is doing a number of units there, and they need some financial help. And so, one of the mechanisms that's going to be applied for Habitat for Humanity is an R3 grant. They have a second development and developer who also needs the same type of support. And we're, we're not looking at the grant, we're looking at other funding options that may be applicable to that one. So it, I think it's important to understand, the goal here is to just provide some planning, and it does not obligate anybody to any type of financial or debt or commitment going forward.
If I may clarify, apparently the URA is a separate legal entity from the city. So as long as the MRR stays and everything stays within the confines of the URA, meaning we don't transfer money from the city to help pay for it, it has to absolutely stay within the confines of the URA, yes, we could do the MRR.
So, and I got a different answer that says, no, a city's urban renewal plan does not overrule the city's charter. In Depot Bay or any other Oregon state, urban renewal agency is a separate legal entity created by a city, but it is ultimately governed by state law and must operate within bounds of the city's comprehensive plan and other applicable law ordinances.
And that's as long as our charter does not specifically call out the URA, which it does not, it's, we can, we can do it.
So that would be part of the planning phase where Axiom would look into some of these.
We can, we can tell bears to those.
That would be changed by then, but at least right now.
And the other thing is, we could potentially work with Lincoln County Housing Authority to be our agent, but rather than Depot Bay perhaps, so that might, that might help us. So, so how should we proceed from here, Keith?
Well, one more note, one more note if I may. You can decide you don't want to exercise the Murrell. You can decide that you'd like to do some planning to see what are the options to add some residents to the city, and Murrell is not an option, and that's fine. It doesn't stop us from planning and aligning it to other funding opportunities.
Exactly.
So we can do the commitment and steps.
So you could, you can, this, by engaging Axiom, who's ready to go and you see a scope work, all you're, all they're going to do is provide you with a path to development in the first stage and that planning. And then the city can, at that point, the city can begin to consider what financing would look like and what, and what charter allows.
So that, that would be great if we can, if we proceed to go forward. We'll have to take a vote on, but adding that, those questions about our best to avoid if the charter does apply in terms of infer funding, you know, what are their options with their, so we could add that to this cover.
Yes, yes.
Um, so do you want to, do you want to go over the, some of the questions that we had? Or how would you suggest that's briefing us so we can make a good decision if you're?
I think what I would ask is, I think there were some questions from Fran, and we responded to those, and then there were some other questions today. Maybe we'd ask if you would please raise the question, and we can answer it and raise the ones that still need to be answered. And maybe there's some that everybody's happy with, and we don't need to spend time on them.
But we haven't seen, we just got this menu where we came, this memo to answer my questions tonight. And Bill sent out some questions yesterday or yesterday?
Yesterday, but I, I think that we need, I was under the impression that it was a MRR, and that we were going to use MRR funding, and so my questions kind of went more around using, using some kind of funding option that the city would not have to change the charter, or we need to get some legal opinion on what is going to be required to do that. But I think there's a bigger question, and that is, who do we need to build the housing for? And it sounds like this needs to be for middle income people. And so in Lincoln County, that definition is rental properties that would be about $1,700 a month to $2,500 a month, and/or purchase prices between $315,000 and $395,000.
And those numbers are about what we're finding. If you're looking at the 80% to 120% as MRR or AMI or the MRR, other communities have, have something more than close to that, about the same.
Yeah, and so the question, the question then is, do those numbers support the people that are going to need to be in that housing? Can, can we realistically, and I think this is what you guys are talking about in the planning process, can we realistically find a builder who can build a single family home in Depot Bay for $395,000 of a support for people? So it would be probably a three bedroom home, two or three bedroom home. And that really is the question, and we, if, if we don't do that particular piece of homework first, I mean, the, the program in Lincoln County makes it very difficult, I think, for a builder to build a home for $395,000.
Keith, do you want to address that?
I can, I can answer that a little bit. And that the, the communities that I'm working with that are doing Murrell projects and, and shooting for that target price point are finding ways to get, to do that. And we have a developer who's doing the building in Tillamook. He and his partner are, will contract and do the building. There's a commitment within the Murrell program. In Southern, we're, they have a partner who is the largest home builder in the Northwest. And they are well versed in that, are building homes, building both apartments and homes that fit in those, and a variety of homes that fit into those price points. One of the things that they're doing in both of those communities to help, to help with that is that they've set up a land trust. And the, and, and a land trust method, the land itself is held by a non-tribal. And so, the purchase for the homes that you buy is simply for the vertical improvements, not the dirt. And then with that goes a deed restriction that allows, that details how, when you sell, you still have to meet the affordability requirements of the 80%.
And Lincoln County has such a land trust, so that's great.
Yeah, and that's what, and that's what, one of the communities did, they used an existing land trust, and one of those other communities established it.
So we have both land, Lincoln County Housing Trust, I don't like to call it a, Housing Trust, because it's a land trust, I don't know, conservation, and then we also have a lot of that community. So, whatever you mentioned, good.
You mentioned in one of our earlier readings that there are developers that have plans ready to go.
Yep.
And they know all the costs and everything, and, and they're ready to just get some dirt and get going.
And that's what, in, in Southern, the, they're working with Simplicity by Hayden Homes. And they presented the community with a number of options for cottage homes that will be 800, 800, 1,000 square feet, up to three bedroom homes at about 1,500 or 1,600 square feet. All of those, and then to be a variety of, of income levels.
And can you restrict, maybe, can, can it be for people who live in Lincoln County? Or do you have to open up the housing to anyone?
It, it, that, I, I think is a little more difficult to say, they must be, they must. So the question here was, do you, I think, would, you want them to be owner, you want them to occupy the house and not, and not run it for others? I think with the deed, with the deed restrictions you could establish on that.
I guess my, my bigger question is, is that who are customers?
So.
That's what they're going to do with my headquarters. That's the whole part of the planning process.
Yes, actually, the councilman's absolutely correct. And as a councilman asks, your question is the, is the right question to ask. And the whole point of this is, R3 is bringing resources at no expense to Depot Bay to answer that question. And to find a path that will meet the right need and be deliverable in the right way, whether it's the right rental rate, the right size of unit, the right, for the right demographic, and, and partner with the right builder or developer at the right price point. The whole point of this proposal is to answer that exact question that you raised.
And I, I can add, the other communities that I'm working with, they, one of the, one of the ways they established that, or they felt that they had established that, because they've gone to employers in the community, and the employers have pre-leased a number of those units, saying, yes, we will commit to four or six of these rental units because we know that our employees are desperately of.
Yeah, salary and I, that, the health, the Samaritan, and they're.
They're healthcare workers.
Health workers, travelers. And then we have Coast Guard that already rents some buildings in town. So at least we know, at least some of the questions to ask.
And, and healthcare is, is the principal one along with, well, generally the principal one in those communities that are doing outreach.
And then we have to know if the tourism sector has that same need or the same affordability. Because we have the Lincoln County housing that's going in just south of.
Just real fine.
And I'm not even, is, is that for low income, it's for the fire victims, but you're going to offer first for the fire victims from. And I'm not even, is is that for low income, it's for the fire victims, but they're going to offer first for the fire victims from Otis? And then I don't know, does anybody know if it's opened up then to low income people or how does that work?
I don't believe it has yet, I think they're still playing it with the burn, which is the wildfire people first, I don't think it's.
Okay.
So the the buildings that are built are then owned by the people who are buying them, or are they leasing them from the developers, they're leasing them from the city who really owns the properties?
Depends on how on how you wanted to structure that. In 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 Southland, they have discussed with employers, how do you employers buy a a fourplex of apartments? And 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 commit to to that, and so to the construction cost. I don't know if they're there, but but employers have been have have been interested in that, so they would know then that they would have a a number of of places then that they they.
But we might find that people really want to own so they can establish credit.
Exactly.
So um and that's part of the assessment?
Yeah.
Um. Anybody, do we want to go through the questions or what what um information do we need to make a decision about whether we proceed with this assessment or not?
Um, this is a free service they're offering to us, I'm not sure why you would not want to do it.
Exactly.
That that's what I would propose about, this is incredibly low risk and no cost.
Yes.
Right, and and what it it will probably, it it is at least it's going to provide information, the city will find applicable at some.
Absolutely, and that's probably could, you know, go into our housing needs study, let me.
Yeah, these folks are thankfully taking on and helping us out because I, what did I tell you, what is our number one? We don't know where to go, we don't know where to start, we don't know how to start.
Yeah.
These are the folks that are going to get that for us and get us in the right direction.
So um.
Do we need a motion for a lost option, I mean, they're just going to do it?
It's for free, there's no, there's it's no cost.
But we do um need to, I'm sorry, just say, we do need to expand the scope of work to get a few more questions in that we want answered. Unless that can be informal, but back and forth with this.
Um. So.
That's for the planning process, so.
Yeah, for the process, yeah.
Their scope of work will cover probably everything that you're looking for, is there some sort of questions you're trying to get put into the scope of work?
Well, just like the one that came up today, right right now, right, is that, go ahead.
If I could speak to that, um as a team, our first step is, we call it discovery. And um we respect all the questions and concerns that you've raised tonight. And actually, we want to learn what those are and and so our first step is that we want to hear your concerns or um what's important to you as a city or as a board, so we can make sure as we do our planning, we take those on board. That we are able, at the end of the day, when we provide you a plan, we've addressed your concerns and we've captured your vision, your direction, your ideas. Um that's a that's a big part of what we do right out of the gate as a team.
Nate, if they have any more questions or concerns.
We have one from Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
All right, sure, thanks, um.
Can you just?
Yeah, can you uh, I'm Joe Cannon, um can you give us some background history as to how your company evolved and what makes you qualified to do these assessments? Based upon your professionalism and your credibility, and do you have any uh historical information you could share with the rest of us as to prior projects?
Yes, we do, um R three has um and this was, I think, was sent over, but we can share it with you. R three has a number of projects currently underway, using the majority of this team and has done this process in different cities. And those projects can be rental properties, they can be single family homes. It can also be the infrastructure and the plots that are are then available for builders to build single family homes. And so they, we can share that that project history with you and the experience that R three has. On R three's team, um do you want to share the screen again and show that first? Um it may be in front of you, but we'll share it as well. On three, on R three's team, which is number three on the proposal, in addition to Ice Sector, who's there with you in the room, is Catalyst, which has the experience related to the the funding mechanisms and the and the funding strategy. Ourselves from Project Manager, and I can deep dive into that a little bit further. Um Western Design International is an architectural design firm familiar with codes, residential design, single family and multifamily. Atlas Land Use is our planner, and so they're very focused on the planning of the the development or the community, the pub, the the empty public space or versus occupied space and density and the functionality. Because we want to make sure it's a pleasant environment, not just for the occupants, but also it it works well with the city and around the city and with transportation. And then Cecil is a civil engineer that helps us evaluate what services are provided there. Is there gas, is there not? Um is there a challenge with any of the services being able to accommodate this new load, whether it's a power load or a sewer load or a storm load or those things? Um and all of them have experience on a number of projects in Oregon, and all of them are working on the R three projects.
This is part of R C's, R three's goal, to bring a whole suite of services to to rural communities.
We we do have that, it's on page uh two and three, I left that one in the pack, so we can look at that later, go ahead, Bill.
I um quick question.
Do you help with public outreach?
I have, in fact, that's something I've done uh with other communities.
Okay, so you'll help us.
I'll be glad to do that, and one one of the things I've, and I've told Kimberly and the mayor this, one of the things I've found when I do that for other communities, it takes a little bit of heat out of the community because it it's a it's a third party and and I try to present it as very informational and and not as if I'm trying to convince the members of the community that it that this is a uh means that they should adopt. And so I would be glad.
Something on the Facebook.
Exactly, I mean, I'll.
Basically what we have right now.
Yeah, I'll be I'll be a presence and be here at meetings, and I'll be glad to do this. And I've definitely, I'm doing a little spread.
Thank you. So um um I think, Kim, would you want to document a formal motion to proceed?
You don't need one, it's free, but it's up to you, if you like, you want to.
I think that um we uh adopt the um project number eight as proposed by Acxiom uh and go forward with uh conforming, confirming their scope of work that have been set before us and then to set up a kickoff meeting.
You came prepared, good for you, thank you. Um I'll I'll second that. Um any further discussion on whether to proceed, does anybody have any concerns?
I I would like, I'd like to make one correction, please.
Okay.
Yes.
I appreciate that you're mentioning Acxiom, but we're a part of the R three team.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, yeah, the R three.
So it is R three that's bringing this service.
I'll make that correction, please amend that to R three strategies, providing the planning uh scope of work.
Okay, you can, you guys can come in, it's the urban renewal, it's a beautiful show. Did you get that motion or?
Mm-hmm, recorder got it.
Okay, um and you heard that about the um.
Commended.
Okay, okay, thank you very much, um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll go. All right, thank you guys very much, thank you all much.
So thanks for following that.
Thank you, thank you for your time, we're excited to work with you.
Great.
And 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 Nate, I'm going to ask you to uh before we go, to uh to to explain your link to Yaha's, if you would.
Well, I grew up in Bend, Oregon, I tell people back when it was blue collar. Because things have changed a bit since I moved on from there. Um my family grew up there and my uncle lived in Yaha's um down near the bluff, near the ocean, and I have fond memories of him playing his trumpet on the beach on the bonfires and making great um um chowder from the potting that we did in the bay, so.
Should we um before we close, should we set up this uh setup kickoff meeting?
Um so um what's your what's your availability and timeframe? Um do you have time before in December or?
Yes, we do. I think um maybe we'll look at that first week in December, because in the kickoff meeting, we want to bring some of the team members that aren't on this call right now. Um that we mentioned to you earlier, the planner, the civil engineer, the architect. Well, it does that work for you if we target that first week of December?
So um we we have a city council meeting on the ninth, um I can't think of it.
Yes, November sixth.
Actually. It's going to be a very busy meeting, so if we can make like a special meeting before then?
Yeah, especially this week, so December ninth is the second weekend in December. And we have that night this um this is a city council meeting.
So are you talking the first week, like fourth, fifth, third, fourth, fifth, that timeframe?
Uh.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying, third, fourth?
Yeah, that works.
Um how is everybody's?
Oh, sorry, sorry, uh the fourth and the fifth is does not work, but the third would work.
I'm sorry.
First, second and third.
As long as I don't get it prepared, the whole reason we use the half meeting is so I didn't have to work on Wednesday evening.
So is December third workable for you, Kim?
No, that's ever, I have to work on Wednesday evening, but there's no pack, right? As long as there's no packet, we can do the agenda, no problem.
Yeah, there's no, you wouldn't, the intention is the meeting is to discuss what we would want to start collecting and and some action items on the backside of the meeting.
What what time of meeting? What time of meeting?
Would you prefer an afternoon meeting or a morning? Um.
Afternoon.
Afternoon meeting? Say two o'clock?
Two o'clock works perfect.
Okay, two P M on December third.
So no packet for Kim to prepare, um it's just going to be a um you'll come, you guys will come with questions or send them out ahead of time, some things you might want to be um learned from us.
I'm sorry, can you see?
Um you might want um it might be good for you or your team to ask, you know, questions upfront that you might want have for us to provide your feedback on, or do you want to have it more, you know, open ended?
Uh what we would like to do is kind of prepare an agenda, so you have some idea of what we'd like to cover in the meeting. Um we can also identify some some information that will be helpful to us.
I think both those things would be great, yeah.
Right, and if you have it before the meeting, bring it to the meeting or after the meeting, that's fine. Some things like um, you know, an ALTA survey, survey that uh outlines the plot boundaries. Um, you know, and identifies what the services are, we'll we'll provide you with some things that we're interested in gathering. Um again, whether it's before, during or after the meeting is fine, and we'll send you.
But it'll be, the gathering part will have to be after the meeting because of um holidays and people's vacation times, that's.
Yeah, and that's perfectly fine.
Okay, so that's great, some of it is just information on some of the gatherings.
Yes, and I would, I would like to share, Cooper reminded me, so our goal, R three's goal is the week of the eighth, is to come visit you and come see you face to face. So um we're preparing that agenda and to put out some potential time slots when we could, because we want to be on the ground and and see the plot that we're planning around and and meet some of you face to face and give you the opportunity to meet us.
That's wonderful, good work.
Um so um in terms of public meeting laws, if we're just providing input, is there any concern about having a majority of the council or?
He's still waiting for him. What's that, he's still needing a quarter and a half meeting.
But if they're coming to do like a site visit and.
Oh, uh that second week, no, just the third, just the December thirty meeting, but the the other one now, it's like waiting, it's not.
Right.
It does, it does, there is some considerations regarding running, we'll ultimately need to come together and make a decision based on what the site visit entails, in which case you could run out of public meeting laws. So it would be better not to.
Okay, well, we can um discuss that at the third meeting. Well, thank you so much, you guys, for showing up, Keith, thank you so much.
My pleasure, I'll be back.
Good, well, look forward to seeing you again. So the um is there any other business for urban renewal?
There are two new bit, two new business things, if I could just bring them up quickly.
Okay, please.
And we can decide whether we can address them now or we have to do them later, but.
Okay.
Um under new business, uh the grant that is in the budget that allows for downtown beautification, or so to speak, beautification, how would we word that in the budget? I needed to understand if that is only for properties that are currently in the urban renewal agency.
Yes.
Or whether, so then downtown businesses really go qualify.
Well, Highway one oh one is.
The highway is, the businesses are not.
I want to clarify, it's very, if you look at the map, it's hard to tell if it's actual physical business.
Well, Mr. Whitmore has gotten.
So those were added, I believe those were added.
We're working on a national.
See, I know that.
But but um, okay, so we can't resolve that right now, and what was you saying?
And then the second one was, uh Mr. Whitmore came to our last council
Mm-hmm.
And suggested that urban renewal money be used to to do those bathrooms. And I I I think we need the bathrooms, but wouldn't it be on Mr. Whitmore to come to the council or to your renewal agency to say, I'd like to have this money so that I can build the bathrooms, the city should not be building the bathrooms, right?
Well, the other thing is we've already voted, we can always change our vote at the city council to not, as always, up, we're leaving those bathrooms.
Correct, we we're not, we don't, we don't, we're not doing anything like that at this point, he said, well, urban renewal money should do it. And I just thought um his expectation, at least it sounded like that urban renewal should be, that Emma City should be rebuilding those bathrooms.
Yes.
And I believe that urban renewal provides some money for the owners.
Which it's all, at those funds, we don't need that ten thousand, that those grants, those ten thousand dollars that.
But he's in urban renewal, at least.
Well, we'll have to clarify, I think we're, you know, we're out of time, let, uh not time, we are out of time, we're out of time. Um so let's um I guess get clarification when staff is time, and then we can set up another uh renewal agency meeting, and we'll probably move on anyway because of this problem.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is, anything else? Business, all right, this.